All right, and so we're gonna go back then, we'll come back to new business. But now, we have the highlight, one of the highlights of the evening, that was a highlight, too. We are moving to item nine, our special report curriculum conversation, the administrative goals for 2015, 2016. And again, it's a pleasure to have you all here. We don't get to sit in a room with all of you together, I don't think, ever. Not even about time, do we? So, thank you all for coming tonight. Turn it over to you. Turn it over to Tim.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it right over to Tim.
Okay, great, thanks, and thanks, everyone, for being here. It is an incredible administrative team, and I have the pleasure of working with them. It's really wonderful. So, tonight was the opportunity to have a conversation with the administrative team to talk about priorities and directions and ideas that are framing the work that we set out to do. And I want to frame this a bit, particularly for the board members who are familiar with this conversation over the past years, because the goals document does look a little bit different. I think we're at a really critical time in education with things we've talked about here in this meeting, with public education under attack, focus on standardized testing, politicians being involved in our schools and taking away local control. So, at the same time, we're seeing a big shift in the students in our classrooms. We're seeing students who, they have a whole different way of viewing the world, they have a different skill set and knowledge base coming into our classrooms. And, of course, there's technology that's really framing a lot of that. So, we really started to ponder these big ideas and questions that can drive, you know, the next decade of our work together. And it's geared around the mission that the board has created in the district mission, creating the leaders of the next generation. So, we started pondering big ideas at our administrative retreat this summer, of what would questions we would want to ask related to our building and our department that would support that district mission and be pathways to that district mission of creating the leader for the next generation. So, you will see how these relate to both the concrete district goals, department goals that they're pursuing, as well as the intent of this, which is to think about big ideas, to be somewhat disruptive to our normal status quo, to be future-thinking, and to sort of spark discussion and debate and inquiry. So, these questions are big ideas, and you'll hear the rationale behind those tonight. You'll be able to engage in that a bit with the administrators, as to why these questions are essential and important to the work that we're doing at Byram Hills. So, they're meant to be, in that way, stimulating and somewhat debatable. And hopefully, that'll come out a little bit tonight. So, with that, we'll just jump into it. And I'm going to start with probably the shortest question on the list, which is our Director of Technology, Dr. Taylor, who asks a very simple question, is knowing obsolete? So, with that simple question, I'm sure there's a simple answer, so. So, Andrew, if you could talk about the origin of that question, why you feel it's important to talk about that today, and how that relates to your work as Director of Technology.
Sure. The question definitely has the fewest number of words, but probably, definitely not small, though. I think when I was reflecting on this question, I thought about an old quote from Albert Einstein, who said, "Memorizing information, I never memorize information, I can look up in a book." And when I think about what's happening at Byram Hills right now, and the Chromebook initiative that we have going on here, where we're putting basically every piece of information known to man in these students' hands, which is far more depth than one book, and we have a responsibility there to think about, with this much information in their hands, what does that mean for teaching and learning today? And how might that shift our thinking a little bit? After reflecting on it, I think we're gonna need to really look at the word "knowing" and figure out what actually that definition of knowing is. Knowing skills is gonna be far different than knowing information. And that's where we're gonna start focusing, I think, right when we start looking into it.
Let me also tell the board if at any time you want to jump in and ask questions. It is meant to be a discussion and a conversation, so feel free to jump in. I'm just prompting some questions to get us started.
I have one.
Sure.
So, we give people tablets. And what restrictions are there on what they can look at, when they can look at it, when they're in the school district?
We have restrictions on the Internet itself, and certain things are blocked on the Internet, as far as SIPA compliance and our compliance regulations that we have. But as far as the way the tool is used in the classroom, just like any other tool, we sort of leave it up to the discretion of the teacher and how that's used. Although, we clearly have some ideas of how we'd like to see it used, and we talk about those a lot. I always go back to an example of where we walked into a social studies classroom, and everyone was learning the same information, but one-third of the class was on the Chromebooks, one-third of the class was using textbooks, and one-third of the class was doing group work around the same topic. To me, that's a wonderful lesson, because it wasn't planned that way. The students migrated to the area which was best suited for them to learn that content and that information.
In the olden days, going back eighteen months, you know, two years, you'd see a textbook proposal, and we'd look at it, we'd go, "Is this from Texas?" And they'd go, "No, no." Okay, we're halfway there. But now, we've got no real ability to really control. And, you know, I'm sorry, these mirror sites that the kids are going to, they're probably learning that in third grade instead of sixth grade, which is when my kids were in the school. So, you can't really keep them from accessing anything on the Internet, frankly. And so much of the stuff out there is just garbage.
Which, to me, makes the question even more important, because it's really about how do we help students understand the skills of how to find the most appropriate information, how to disaggregate that information, how to filter the information, and how to present solutions and conclusions that are outside a rote piece of knowledge. And I think that's our skills, and that's our challenge. You're absolutely right. There are constantly ways that people can get around any technical barrier that we put in place. There's no possible way that we could prevent every breach technically. But what we can do is help students understand their rights and responsibilities as a digital citizen. And that's, I think, that's one of the goals of the Technology Department, is to help work with the teachers and the students to really foster that spirit of inquiry, where they have the ability to go out and find information, and there's some freedom there, but within this intellectual sort of scope that we've put in place, where we want it to be academic.
Yeah, I think it's a radical transformation that we can't avoid participating in.
Yeah. And Jen, I'll ask you to speak to your question, which also speaks to inquiry, and the role of inquiry in the social studies classroom, which I believe relates in the same way about the access to information and how students interpret that. So, can you speak to why your question is important?
Sure, sure. So, we're really looking at how can inquiry deepen historical understanding and interpretation. And what we really want to do is, you know, relating to Andrew's question about knowing, you know, maybe years ago, it was good to know the dates and the facts, and memorize the map, and kind of spit it back, and that was sort of good enough. But we really want kids to understand deeply and really think about historical events and think about the world around them. So, by, we're really examining an inquiry model, it shifts your thinking to the student as the center versus the teacher as the disseminator of everything. So, we want to spend the year really looking at how can we do that effectively? How can that lead to a deeper understanding? And how do we support kids, so they can make those, they can look at those sources carefully, and they can interpret them in a way that will help them apply that knowledge in an authentic way?
So, what skills are different for students in the world you're speaking of versus, say, the classroom I sat in?
Well, I mean, it's just the level of thinking. You know, if you think of Bloom's taxonomy, you know, it might have been okay just to memorize on a very basic level, but this requires much deeper thinking, because, yes, you'd still need to know some basic information, but it's, you know, what do you think about that information? How do you compare that information to what you already know? And then, how do you apply it to, again, the world around you, to yourself, to some sort of a solution? We want kids to really think deeply about it, and really, for the historical events that they're studying to really have meaning. We think that helps them understand the world around them in a much, much more authentic way.
Because one question that I would have is, I guess, still a lot of the survey courses, either the AP courses, take the approach of, we're gonna teach, you know, many different points in time, through whatever you're learning, whether it's European history or US history, a little bit about each point, it's really a survey-type course.
Yes.
And when you think about how people really learn most effectively, or will end up going into a career and dealing in their lives, they're gonna take topics and have to go very, very, very deep.
Yes.
And with the Internet, now, you have the resources to be able to go deep, and if there's twenty kids in the class, you're gonna have twenty people going deeply into different topics of their interest within that subject.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is there room within the confines of, you know, the state exams and the AP, you know, exams, to be able to do that?
Yeah, it's a big challenge. The nice shift that we see occurring in both the state and the college board level is a focus on what they call conceptual understanding. So, they're shifting away from knowing all these different things, to do understand the big idea, and then they're giving teachers choices in which to dive into those big ideas. And the teachers can really give those choices to kids as well. So, there's definitely a change in the field responding to that. But, again, it's a challenge. It's not easy. We know that, you know, May for the AP or June is coming, and how do you balance that? We want kids to be prepared, you want them to have that survey, but finding that balance of letting them dive deep is a challenge that we talk about, you know, every day.
I know it's a similar situation at Coman Hill and Wampus exploring these same ideas about inquiry and sort of covering the curriculum. So, Peggy, if you want to talk first about your idea of inquiry, your question is asking how to inquiry empower lifelong learning. And I know Coman Hill teachers always take very seriously their role of preparing students for the upper grades, and we're hearing a lot about the demands of the upper grades now from Jen and from Andrew. So, I'm wondering about your thinking about it in that foundational piece.
Yeah, so our role at Coman Hill is huge because of all the changes that are going on with the one-to-one initiatives. And you have to look at it like this. When they come into Coman Hill, children naturally ask a lot of questions. Children naturally are able to struggle and fail and learn how to be successful. Historically, we have given children, we have taught them answers to questions. We haven't really given them the skill set to ask questions. Much of our delivery has been, we are the holders of all this information, and we're gonna deliver it to you. So, there's a shift going on right now at Coman Hill, in that we're trying to build a culture of inquiry for our children, because that will feed into their learning as they go from Wampus to Crittenham to the high school. They come into Coman Hill asking tons of questions. And then, if I think, fast forward thirteen, sixteen years, if I am building the leaders of tomorrow, what our children need to have at that foundational level is a skill set in how to inquire. And for me, that looks like they learn how to clearly communicate, that will develop stronger relationships with their peers, which will ultimately improve task performance in the groups that they're in, which hopefully, then I send them up, those foundational skills are there for them.
So, now, I'm thinking about how that looks in curriculum development. So, you've been doing a lot of work, for example, let's say, in the ELA literacy program. What might that inquiry piece look like as you're looking at it under, you know, this is an umbrella to curriculum and literacy?
It's, there's, when we develop curriculum, we always begin with an essential question, and that guides our thinking. And we do have a culture where teachers can ask questions, and that drives the direction we take, but we stay close, stay true to our vision. One of the questions we're grappling with this year is, how can we develop a set of behaviors so that every child learns within their zone of proximal development for reading? And what does that look like for every individual child? So, essential questions guide our teachers, and we're gonna be looking to have those essential questions live in our classrooms, and that children know that these questions serve them well in their path as they move from grade to grade, school to school.
Can you, would you give an example of, tell a question that you're talking about from the kids?
Oh, you know, I was thinking about one that would really hit home for you. In our second-grade classrooms, the children come into the classrooms, and we do a lot of surveys about, what does it look like to make a difference? And then, they have to think about that question and say to themselves, "Well, how have I made a difference?" And they'll look for someone. And the way we measure that is if the person that they made a difference to can pay it forward and make a difference for somebody else. So, it's really them owning questions that our teachers spend carefully, how to make an impact in someone else's life, and then the children own it, and they come up with questions for themselves. And that one just speaks to, we're trying to educate the whole child, and it's a real big piece, our, you know, just taking care of others, being respectful, responsible.
Right, the reflection part of it, too.
Seeing both the academic piece, and curiosity and inquiry can go deeper, and then also the social-emotional connection with students. So, thinking about that, let me jump over to our middle school. That's a question related to that piece of it, the social-emotional capacity of students. Kim asked in her question, how do we foster a culture that pursues curiosity, responsibility, and reflection? So, Kim, can you speak about, in your mind, what does that question mean, and where are you exploring that in the middle school?
I think of what that question is pursuing. So, we spent a lot of time, as an assistant principal, building community. So, those three behaviors, to me, are critical when you're talking about community. We spent a lot of time speaking with students and them knowing about what it is to be responsible. It's this idea, again, of knowing. But then, the question for middle school students is, you might know what the appropriate behavior is, but sometimes you don't act, it's trial and error in terms of your judgment and your decision-making in middle school. So, that's where reflection, and even curiosity will come in to help build a community. So, we are spending time this year looking at how, as a faculty, how as an administration, can support students to really take on this idea of being curious and being reflective about their own behaviors in an academic setting and in a social setting as well.
So, the academic, I can understand in terms of classrooms. Could you talk a bit about the other areas in which you work with students? What's an example of where you would pursue this work with kids?
Sure. Well, there are some new things that we're gonna try. Something simple, for example, of a student coming in and working with me about a poor decision that they've made, that they might get sent down to the assistant principal's office. The reflective piece, there's now a card that I have on my desk, and I'll ask them to tell me what happened, and then I'll flip the card over, and I'll ask them to tell me, to reflect on how the teacher would tell me the situation happened. So, that is just a simple, basic way that I can visually have some of our kids practice this reflection. And I actually had to reflect on that myself in order to think of how I could bring that to my office. Something a little bit bigger, you know, our teams are very involved in service, our, we have clubs, we have student government that we're even revamping a little bit, and we wondered, maybe we should bring all these clubs and representatives together, and what opportunity would that lend us to let them be reflective about a school as a whole? What we're pursuing, how we're doing it, how we're doing with kindness? We have this initiative of hashtag kindness. Let's get all the student body involved, to kind of question what we've done and what we could do more of. So, again, that's kind of some of the initiatives that we're taking. We don't know how that's gonna play out, but it's a step forward.
And, in a way, related to this idea of students, pursuing students' areas of interest, helping kids, push kids' thinking to deeper learning, I know at Wampus, Deb has been doing a lot of work with something called growth mindset. It's been a theory that's been around for a while and gaining some traction in education. We've been studying it over the past few years. So, Deb, can you talk about it, related to your question, which is, how can a growth mindset shape one's approach to teaching and learning? So, there's a connection about this idea of a growth mindset in the curriculum. So, where's that going in terms of the growth mindset?
Sure. We started a study group last year, volunteer for teachers, and ended up with twenty-plus teachers that wanted to be part of it. We also rolled out a lot of work in faculty meetings, so that everyone had the same foundational understanding of the research of mindset and what it actually meant. And basically, in a very quick nutshell, there's fixed mindset or growth mindset. And research has shown that people that have a fixed mindset tend to believe that intelligence is innate. You're either born with it or you're not born with it. So, if you don't get something, it's not worth putting any effort into, because you're not gonna get it, you're just gonna shut down. The flip side of that is the growth mindset, which has now been, over the past several years, been backed up by brain research and brain imaging and how kids and learners think, is that intelligence can be grown through practice, through effort, making mistakes, being persistent, failing, and then figuring out what went wrong, and then doing it again. So, last year, it was a study. We started in terms of curriculum, we were looking at our literacy program last year, which we started this year, but part of that was developing a library of appropriate kinds of books for kids. And we actually bought books that evidenced mindset. So, through literature, the kids were directly learning, number one, how to close read, because that's one of the skills they have to do, but also learning about how their brain works and that with practice and effort and the word "yet," "I don't get it, I don't get it yet," that this was going to be a huge impact on the way they approached their learning.
And so, right now, I've talked to the board about our literacy curriculum, for example, and it's something that we're, a new framework that we're implementing at Wampus. How do you see your question and that idea of growth mindset framing a curriculum, discussion or implementation or design?
Well, one of the things that we've had a challenge with in particular is writing, because there are children that just, they'll do a first draft and feel, that's the best they're gonna do, they don't want to go back and revise it, they can't make it better, they're not good writers. So, an example of the mindset work in terms of an actual curriculum is that, once children believe that, there's always room for getting better, there's always room for making one iteration better the next time. And the strategies on how to do that, if they have a growth mindset, that's a challenge that they like to go for. They like to improve, they have a belief that learning is something that they can improve upon, and doing those drafts is gonna end up in a better product for them. So, if we couple and marry the teaching of mindset with the children, and they feel that ownership of their learning, then they're able to approach writing as an example, but all real learning, in a way that sees mistakes and failure and trying over and over again as a really powerful way of learning. And it also connects to the inquiry that Peggy's been talking about, and Jen, and Kim, and Andrew, in terms of kids that, or any learners that have a growth mindset, are, they are curious, and they're not afraid to express that curiosity and ask those questions, where fixed mindset learners are not so willing to do that.
Seems like there's instructional implications, and it does remind me of Andrew. Andrew, you can speak to our tech curriculum at the middle school, which we're redesigning, thinking about your question about knowing, but also that idea of trying to help students overcome the fear of failure, and where that notion comes from and what that might look like in the classroom.
Yeah, this past summer, the tech teachers spent the summer redesigning the curriculum, so that it was one-third multimedia design, one-third coding, and one-third robotics. And the idea was to create a three-year curriculum, so by the time the students got to eighth grade, they were using these robotics and coding skills to solve real-world problems. So, to do that, what we've done is we structured the curriculum, for example, robotics, in a way that allows the students to work through a series of challenges that they have to do, that they have to complete with the robots. But we don't actually sort of give them all of the steps in order to create that challenge. What we do is we say, "Here's the challenge, and here's some resources that you could use to complete that challenge." And some of them use those resources, some of them find better resources, some of them use other resources, some of them don't use any of them and just start experimenting. And what we're finding is, it's pretty amazing, because you'll have five different groups in the room completely tackling the same challenges in completely different ways and at different paces. You might have two or three different challenges going on in the same room, and it's really opened up the curriculum a lot, and allowed students to really fail a lot and fail often on a pathway to success, you know, so that they're getting to success, but they're doing it by experimenting and having freedom to fail.
Does this change grading at all? I mean, you're not like, here's your end product, it's kind of a journey in a way.
So, when they restructured the grading in that class, they've made it more, sort of like a points, almost a points game system, where each of the challengers have a certain amount of points associated with them, and there's a max number of points you have to get at the end. But you can go far beyond those points, and actually, you'll get rewards for going beyond those points, and you can actually earn points after the semester's ended. There's more challenges that you can continue to do on your own, through the computer club after school or independently, to keep earning points even after the class stops.
As you guessed, and the mindset, though, too. Do they get to improve their grades if they keep improving their?
Well, that's one of the things that we're looking at, but that is a part of mindset and growth mindset, is to be able to take, if you get five math problems wrong, to know that you put in good effort, to have the teacher work with you on strategies to fix that mistake, and then to fix that mistake. So, rather than the one worksheet where you get five wrong, you get the chance to go back and learn what they did wrong, how to fix it, and go from there. But that's all part of my question, because grading is a question.
That's the kind of question that needs to be asked in the buildings.
Exactly.
And maybe less so in Wampus, but more so in the middle school and high school where grades are meaningful. And that's exactly the kind of disruptive question we want to ask.
Right.
So, what's interesting about the robotics right now is that, when you see a group complete a challenge, you literally see them jumping up and down and screaming a little bit, you know? And it's not something you see in a normal assignment, that where, after I've completed my math work, you know, I jump up and down. No, they are, they're actually, they're celebrating that success. "Dr. Paltrow, let's not jump up and down." It's a little rowdy, that's okay. But the students are finishing up right now, and they're saying, they're gonna continue to work on this. And grades aren't the reason they're gonna continue to work. They're gonna continue to work because it excites them and because there's that next little challenge that they have to complete, because it is sort of like a game, you know? You really want to climb that next arrow.
Did I understand that the curriculum has every kid in the school taking coding in, I guess, seventh grade and robotics in eighth as part of the curriculum?
So, this year, everybody in the school gets the same experience. It's a third robotics, third coding, and a third multimedia, and it's very structured in the way it's designed. Next year, seventh and eighth grade will get a little bit different experience. It'll be a little bit more project-based, one whole project for the semester. And then, in year three, the eighth grade will get a completely different set, where they're gonna give a big question, like, "How do you solve the water problem in the world?" I don't know, it's just an example. And so, they have to create either an advertising campaign, or a new invention, or using their coding, or an app to help track where good water sources are. They can come up with ideas based on this big question. So, it's gonna get broader and broader over the next three years.
Tech classes come a long way.
Yeah.
The mind tightens.
As a philosophy major in college, I really love these questions. I realize I don't have to implement them. What we always used to say as philosophy majors is, it taught you how to think, not what to think. So, it may have been because we weren't gonna get jobs as philosophers. But I think it does really, a lot of these questions do lead to creating really flexible thinking. And I, and not to sort of add to your charge, but to the point that was kind of raised earlier, I think it would be interesting to see how kids respond when what they're asked to do goes beyond achieving a certain grade or really learning something. Does that release some of the pressure for them in a district that's very high-achieving and we have a right to be proud of, but it gives them something else that they can really think about and talk about and internalize in a way that a grade may not do for a lot of kids? Because there's the kids who will be really, really great, flexible, inquisitive thinkers that might not get a test result that they can someday show to a college, but, boy, they're gonna know how to think. And I think that's just an incredible gift to give kids, and it really does help create leaders.
But you still have to grade them, don't you?
Oh, absolutely. I guess, I'm just saying that it offers a student another window into themselves that they may not see always reflected on a report card. It may allow them to sort of realize, "Oh, I can really be a thinker and a learner because I'm curious, because I'm asking, well, if it's always "why," why can't it be "X?" And they have to be graded, and that, you know, that works on a big scale for a school district. But I guess, I think, these kinds of questions, if it can lead to a point where we can sort of teach students that it's not just about the grade.
I'm with you on the value of that. I think the challenge that we're gonna face as a district is, how do you create an assessment that can put a grade to that value?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I'm gonna be, you know, go out a little bit on a limb and say, you know, sometimes you can't assess everything, sometimes you just know. That you've given a child something that you can't measure, you can't prove, even though state will ask us to do it, and there'll be some complicated form, somebody's gonna have to fill in for it.
Well, and you know, you have a class of twenty-seven kids, the teacher's gonna have to have a one-on-one, almost, with, you know, in some way, to really understand how that person thinks. You can't just give the same test to everybody and come back. I don't know. Obviously, not professionally. Obviously not a professional.
There's a, a big movement now happening at Coman Hill, where the, the way we are, and we're different, I get it, but, because we don't have the state test, but our, our, the way we measure and evaluate children is really based off of a progressive rubric. It's, we call it the staircase rubric, and there's levels for every single child in the building to live on. I'll just use the area of writing, but we're looking to do it in the other disciplines. And the teacher knows exactly where that child lives on that rubric, not before grade, but to know that they're here today, and I wanna get them there tomorrow. And the child knows where they're at, not what level they're at, but where they're at, and where they have to get to tomorrow. So, there's always, it's more of, I'm gonna use the word growth.
Growth, yeah.
It's, it's a growth model.
Not in the APPR sense, like...
Right, yeah, but the, the concept is that we're always growing, we're not labeling them by a score, we're, we're telling them where they are today, where they need to be, and how they're going to get there.
The other thing, too, is, and I'm gonna go back to what Joyce said, research has shown with the mindset research, that the kids that are, are known as the growth mindset learners are higher achievers, because they're not focused on the, on the score at the end of the day, it's about the process. And it's the kids that are focused on the scores that shut down as they go through the grades and up through high school. So, there is a, a body of research that does support that, regardless of a grade or not, it's the way that you, and that's why the question is, how do they approach learning? Because that's, that's really an indicator of pushing a higher achievement, if the focus is on that process versus that grade.
So, the question for me is, is what we're measuring? What is the assessment?
Yeah, and it's not the state tests that are gonna help us.
So, we have to start defining what's essential to our content, and also the skills and behaviors we expect of kids, and how do you measure that? And a lot of these questions are getting to that as well.
It's the right question to ask. In business schools, many of them now have transitioned to a big portion of the grade coming from group projects, because at the end of the day, what do you do in life, whether you're a teacher, or whether you're in business, or whether you're a doctor, you're working most likely in teams? And it's, in a way, it's inherently unfair, because what if there's the free rider that somebody does, and I taught a module in a business class, and that's exactly what happened. This guy comes to me, says, you know, we got a B minus, we really just, I deserved an A, but my team let me down the last day, but, you know, that's real life. So, that may not be the right model for K-12, but, I mean, thinking about these things, because I think 20 years ago, you wouldn't have had that phenomenon in business school, you know, makes sense. And I think a lot of the themes that you guys are talking about tonight strike me as probably the difference between a good district and a great district, because if, if we operate on the classic academics and do a good job and teach kids ELA, math, science, social studies, like had been done over the last, you know, 50, 100 years in this country, we have a good district, but if we can intertwine some of these themes around inquiry, around entrepreneurship, and invention, and creativity, and mindset, and positive thinking, then that's probably the difference between, you know, good and great. So, it's trying to take now some of these themes and make them into really actionable steps in all the schools, so that we can all sit here and kind of be convinced that we're on the right track, or maybe we're not on here, we can, we can, you know, turn around and try something else, but I think experimenting with some of these things is a great, great thing to do from my perspective.
And how do you then take all these, because a lot of them are very different, and they're all, you know, pretty lofty, how do you take them and synthesize it from the district so that, you know, if you find something that is working, that it's, it's going through the entire district?
That's our challenge, and that's part of what, why we're exploring this this year, is to figure out what is emerging as essential, what are the essential key ideas that we really feel are the most important things that we should focus on with kids? We'll be, then to be leaders of the 21st century.
What does a timeframe look like to flesh these out?
You know, well, we've committed to exploring it this year at our retreat, and I think we have to reflect on that as we go through the year. We have regular monthly administrative council meetings where we get together, and we'll be reflecting on this, we'll be asking that question, is what are we discovering, what are we learning? And I think we're gonna be feeling our way through this, as they are with their faculty, in collecting data throughout the year, and by the end of the year, hopefully, we'll have a sense of direction of where we're headed. So, there's, it's an iterative process for us of constantly asking, now, where are we? So, it's, it's a cycle for us.
I have a question related to exactly that, Tim. And, you know, last night, I attended a, a school board governance program, and, you know, there was a model given to us, which, you know, here's the board's job, here's the administrator's job, and the board's got the vision, and the mission, and the goals, and these, these, you know, where do we want to be? Keep us out of the, you know, micromanaging and running the district. The administration is all, okay, well, we've got our charge, how do we do it, who does it, where is it measurable, and how is it measurable, and we, we'll take that charge and perform. And that's the traditional model. I, I still like to see the board involved heavily as we do some of this big thinking, and bring us along with you. I, I don't think we'll be an anchor, but I do think that, you know, when we're talking about, what does this community feel like it wants, in, you know, what, what is a citizen of the 21st century look like? We can, we can help in that conversation. So, I hope that we're involved with that, and that, you know, we can begin a dialogue about that.
Will?
Thank you. Just, no, I don't think you're an anchor at all, in fact, I don't recall a curriculum conversation that ever started a conversation among the board. I mean, sometimes there was a little bit of back and forth and some questions, but this one actually created an actual conversation in the room, which is, is great. When we were talking about this before, the board was excited about these ideas for a couple of reasons. One, it seems very much a positive counter to where the state is telling us to put our energy. And I think the board recognizes that if we don't do something like this consciously, we're just gonna end up doing, you know, filling the blanks for the state. They, and kind of to expand on what Brett was saying, not only do they wanna be involved, but they were speculating, you know? One thing I said is, what might happen is, the questions might change. A department or a building that presented a question today might have an entirely different question by June because of the work that they've done on it. Or, you know, I'm looking through this and seeing a lot of inquiry questions, maybe there'll be fewer questions, you know, and we'll find some ways that, I think in general, fewer essential questions are probably the better essential questions. And then, I, I think, you know, also, they wanna hear what the next steps are. So, this, this is definitely a very, very positive development.
When I first read these, I mean, at first I had to say, white what?
Where's all the charts?
See, we had the benefit of never seeing them.
But then, I said, this is exciting, then I said, this is really uncomfortable. I mean, but it's a good kind of uncomfortable. So, I give you all a lot of credit, and Tim, I give you a lot of credit, because this is uncharted territory for, for us, and it'll be exciting, exciting to see where this, this goes.
I think the one thing I'd add is, as we prepare our kids for, you know, you prepare our kids for the next generation, you know, when I hear things like, you know, technology initiative, this growth mindset, I think of artificial intelligence, right? This idea of, which is pervasive in our, you know, world today, so I just think it's, it's right on point with all the things that are at the forefront of, you know, how we're developing as a society, so.
Let me check in with Robin on time, because, well, we haven't gone an hour, I know, you know, it is late, and we have other things to do, and we haven't heard from everyone. I certainly would want to involve more if you'd like, but it's...
Are you all okay to stay for a few minutes more?
The superintendent, who was running the show last night, said nothing good happens after 9:30.
I thought, I thought it was only 8:30.
Yeah, it's 9:06.
Oh, just a couple more.
Sure, let's hear from... Yeah, that's stuck, we've tried that. Yeah, so, take us through. Yeah, so, we'll talk to a few others, we do have some new folks with us, so we can hear their thinking on it as well. A lot of what I'm hearing, too, is about really shifting cultures, shifting the way we think as teachers, as a district. And so, I know, I'll talk to Deepak, our fine arts director, whose question talks, speaks to culture a bit, and the culture in the fine arts, and also you talk about communication in fine arts. To me, traditionally, fine arts was always learning a skill, how to draw, how to sing, none of which I could do, so I didn't like the arts, but you're speaking about something completely different. Dodgeball, wrestling, we know kids do those. My issue's coming. So, I like that shift, it sounds more intriguing. Can you talk about what that question means to you and your department?
I'll start by just letting you know, my question is, how can arts education prepare our students to engage with, participate in, and value culture, creativity, and communication? It's a huge question, and it's changed about three or four times so far. We've, my department and I have explored this in department meetings, we've explored it in our teacher, in our teacher observations, we've also explored it on a Google+ community that was created for them to kind of talk about what they think this means, and also a place for them to share the things that are happening. What I like about the question is that it speaks to things like the 21st century citizen and the 21st century leader, and what we want it to look like in the 21st century, not only as artists, but as consumers of art. So, the point of participating is obvious, we always teach our students how to create art, both in art class, or whether it's performing in the band, orchestra, or chorus, but valuing the culture of it as something that actually speaks to the people that we share with, and to the people that are gonna come after us, as something that is important to represent who we are as a people.
And where, how are teachers responding to this question, and, and the work you have to do with them? Is it a shift in their thinking, or is this sort of natural to the teachers in the department?
Well, at first, it was, it was interesting, because when I posed this question to them, they're all like, well, it's obvious, it's absolutely obvious, you know, art's important. And then, little things started to happen, where they're just like, wait a second, I just realized that, you know, not many of our students actually go into the arts, so what are we actually doing here? Why is it important for us to teach them about this? And then, we talked about things like diminishing audiences in concert halls, like when Peter Gelt started as a general manager at the Metropolitan Opera, just, just really quickly, he said, he started, and he said that the average age of a person watching an opera at the Met was 60. Then, five years later, he did the same thing, and it was 65. So, then he's like, okay, so my audience is dying. To me, what that really said to me is, either students are just uninterested in it, they haven't been taught about it, and it's not just opera, I'm an opera singer, so of course I will go to that example, but does that mean that if we don't promote this, that now museums will close down, that other cultural institutions will no longer be important? And as citizens of the 21st century, that's something that we're okay with.
So, you're, your question, participation, which I could read as appreciation, but I think it's deeper than that.
Right.
Just appreciating it.
Oh, right.
Interesting. And also, going to our other new director, Rob, who's director of physical education and health education, Rob's question I also find intriguing in the sense of my experience in phys ed, of course, but also with your question about, what does it mean, what does it mean to live a healthy and productive lifestyle in the 21st century? So, with health and phys ed, I've always viewed that as physical health. Is that what you mean, or is there more to, to that?
There, there is more to it, and with this question, and thinking about this question, everybody, everybody wants to be healthy. Everybody wants their students to be healthy, and your, and your children to be healthy, and those around you who you love to be healthy. Now, health, as we know, has, there's many different components to health. There's physical health, there's emotional health, there's, there's, there's social health, and, and mental health, and when you put all those together, and combining the health and the physical education component, we're, we're really touching upon all of those, and, and, and piggybacking on some of the things that are already taking place within the district, such as our, our peer leadership program, where, right, right there, we're talking to, talking about a health component with, with stress reduction, which is a big component of health today, and, in, in our lives, and, and we wanna make sure that the students have the right tools and the resources. So, when I thought about this question, I thought about tying it to the New York State standards, where you have the knowledge and the skills to manage your environment, and also manage your resources, to become a resource manager for your own health, and, and be an advocate for yourself. Are we giving the students the tools to manage their own health in the 21st century? And have those conversations about living a healthy lifestyle?
It does connect with our flexible support program at the high school, the work we've been doing with the Depression Center at Michigan, Chris would certainly speak about those, he's not here this evening, and relates to that exploration of really thinking about wellness in the school, and Rob's been thinking about that with his teachers K-12, and what that looks like. Thanks, Rob, and let me jump over, because we're, we're talking a lot about thinking about deepness of curriculum, talking about rigor of curriculum, and then the growth mindset as well, on that students can do this, so it's hard to talk about all this without talking about our students with special needs, and the impact this has on them, and certainly look at that in terms of common core, so I would like Jill to speak a bit to her question, which is also really big, and an important one for, for the students, for that population, which is, what is success for students with disabilities? And so, how do we define success? So, what are you grappling with, with your question? How does that relate to your work?
Right, so first of all, the question should promote and be an opportunity for work with our staff to, to really identify what is success. I did spend time and changed my question a lot since the retreat this summer, and came to, to this question, because I think what it'll do is, when I meet with the staff, or the special education teachers, I want them to get to the point so that they can really identify and talk about, how are we meeting the needs of our students, the kids that are in front of me? How do I get them to be successful? If I think about the student that is a school phobic or has anxiety, success for that student is that they come into school, they come through the door, and maybe they're only here for an hour, but that's success for them that day. For the student that can't read, or the student that is a struggling reader, for them to be able to decode some letters that fit together to make a word, that's success for that student in that particular moment in that day. Or the student that struggles to speak to their classmates or their peers on a particular day, if they happen to have that social exchange, and, you know, say, hi, thank you, like, just two words like that, that can be huge for that student with disabilities that struggles in those particular areas. So, I want the question to be a platform so that when I meet with the staff, and each of the different schools, I meet with a psychologist monthly, for all of us to really look to say, what are we doing, what are our programs that we have to offer here for students that have disabilities in Byram? As you know, we do have students that come from other districts as well, but we want to be able to expand our programs, really look to see if we have students that have real intensive needs, and we have special classes here in the district, do we have it in all grade levels? Like, when we get to the high school, do we have special classes in each of the academic subjects for students that need that? If they've had that as they've come through, because they require that level of support, do we have that? Are we expanding on integrated co-teach, which is the two-teacher model, with a gen and teacher, and a special ed teacher together? Do we have that in all grade levels in the buildings? So, I wanna use the question, and I think it will also create and staff to be like, what is success for my students? Because it might be different for each person that's sitting there. And of course, our students come with plans, our students with special needs have IEPs, they have goals, it's individualized, the acronym stands for Individualized Education Plan. So, we have to tie that in with our curriculum, what are we doing, what are the modifications that we're putting in place, and how can we get our students to be successful, and what is success? So, it is a big question.
Going to our previous discussion about, what do we measure, and how do we measure it? And I hear in Jill's response, with students with disabilities in particular, I think all kids need this, but particularly with yours, this frequent measurement of these students, and looking at incremental progress on a regular basis, because sometimes that success is gonna be really slow, in some of the things you're describing. Let me wrap up with a final question, sort of go to a flip side of something. So, we've, we've given a lot of attention to, to technology and to STEAM a bit here, and looking at Melissa's question on global competency. Melissa's in the World Languages Department, chair back there, asking about how can exploration promote global competency for world language students? So, first, Melissa, talking about, you know, what is this global competency? What do you mean by that?
So, global competency is the American Council on Teaching a Foreign Language's response to common core. What it basically, four tenants of it, investigating the world, recognizing perspectives, communicating ideas, and taking action. Also, that an interdisciplinary knowledge emerges with our students. That's global competency. In a nutshell.
And so, what would that look like now in the classroom? So, what's your vision for what happens?
Exactly, so what happens is, traditionally, in New York State, we used to teach students based on topics of survival, Spanish, French, or Italian, how they can order in a restaurant, you know, book a hotel room, something like that. The shift has now changed to a thematic approach, where students can now interconnect... The shift has now changed to a thematic approach where students can now interconnect with their peers around the globe based on, you know, their, the, the use of technology and start to communicate on deeper issues, themes such as science and technology, beauty and aesthetics, arts and, and history.
Yeah, if, you know, my understanding of world languages has always been to speak the language. So I took four years of Spanish and how much can I speak, can I speak fluently, with fluency? So is that still a goal or is that in, in sort of conflict with all the competence?
That doesn't go away and it's still going to happen at the lower levels, but what we're starting to do is put in a little bit of that global piece to it. So for example, I teach a communications class at the high school and just today I took them to the Botanical Gardens to see the Frida exhibit. My goal was, the theme of the goal was identity. So how are they going to talk about themselves? How are they going to talk about Frida Kahlo's work? And how did Frida Kahlo show her identity through her artwork? You know, going back a couple of years, they would have learned the grammar, the adjectives, they would have learned the differences in the two verbs. It would have been rote worksheets, but instead now they took selfies with a picture and now they're going to have to describe what they saw in that picture and what was Frida Kahlo's identity based on that painting that she did. The Level Four class did the same exact trip. They went to the Botanical Gardens in the spring, but they did it from a different angle because it's a historical, political theme-based class. And they talk about the political involvement that Frida Kahlo and Diego Rivera had in their artwork with the government back then, the issue of race with the Mestesaki and how that was interpreted through artwork and all of the associated vocabulary with that. So it's a deeper conversation, more than just, I need, you know, a pizza. Moving forward, I'm excited because, you know, Deepak talked about the opera and how it's dying out. Well, thankfully, he's an opera singer and he's going to be talking to our Level Three Italian, our Level Four Italian, and our AP Italian classes. We're taking them to an opera to, because it is an important aspect of the Italian culture, he's going to give them the background information about opera because my teachers are excellent Italian teachers, they don't know opera. And then the, my teachers will double up with the vocabulary necessary to discuss an opera and the value of it within the culture.
It sounds richer and deeper. It sounds like if kids experience it in this way and make connections, they'll connect to the language more.
Right. And so that's, let me give you a little history. We just are finishing an eighteen-month self-study with tri-states and where we're benchmarking how we are falling on this continuum of global competency. So what we're hoping to find out is where we're at and where we need to go. So my essential question kind of came out of that with what is exploration going to do for global competency? Exploration of the teacher and what the teacher's capable of doing and how far can we challenge those students to explore as well?
I'm sensing in your question, it's not just world languages. It sounds like it could have connections outside your department, obviously.
It has to be interdisciplinary. You know, we're working with Deepak's group. I've also started talking to some social studies teachers and talking to some English teachers about other ideas of how we can gel this together.
Can I, can I follow up on something Melissa said if you don't mind? As she's talking, I'm thinking about actually a lot of the ways that the global competency that's going on with world languages is actually really part of what we're seeing in the English classroom. There's been a big transformation that's happened. And your traditional English classroom used to be just writing a paper, the teacher would read it, it was a conversation that was really a two-way street. And one of the things that's happened over the, even the last two years with the Chromebooks and the Wi-Fi is that we're realizing there's such a wide audience. And we're realizing that the writing that students do can reach across this globe in a nanosecond. And because of that, things are changing. What it means to be literate is changing. And so the question that we're looking at in the English department is really about how literacy itself is being transformed in the 21st century. It's, it's so rapid that there are different forms of, of writing that are taking place that weren't even around 10 years ago, whether it's blogs or even Google Plus communities that Deepak was mentioning. And so it's transfixed sort of what teachers think about and in ways it's challenging us because I don't know what it's going to look like in five years. And yet I need to prepare for that. And I need to help teachers and students prepare for that.
So an idea I sort of started gently talking about is if we're talking about leaders for the 21st century, regardless of how you feel about words like internationalism and globalism, the fact is, any of our students who are going to be leaders in the 21st century are going to have to have some facility with people from other cultures. It's very unlikely, and I know this will bother some people, that we're going to give all of them the language that they don't know they need yet, but they're going to need in fifteen years if they're working in China or Brazil. I don't know if they should learn Portuguese. Brazil's a big powerful country. I don't know if they should learn Chinese. Nobody learns Chinese. I don't know if they, what language they should learn. But I do know leaders of the 21st century, whether they're in business or politics or science or the arts, it's going to be a, a much more international world than the one that I grew up in. So when we think right now about what's, you know, shining at us, it's STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. The question I have is what's the other side of the moon? You know, what's the part that's in the dark right now? And I think Melissa's hit on it. And it can certainly, I mean, the obvious ones missing are English language arts, foreign languages, and social studies. And they are obviously ones that connect to this theme of internationalism. And all kinds of exciting possibilities that go way beyond, you know, frankly, learning colors and numbers in another language and then graduating from high school and being able to order a pizza or find out where the bathroom is. Big difference there in being able to actually feel comfortable being a leader among people from different cultures. Big difference between, oh, let's take a spring break trip to Europe and go visit museums. You know, there's all kinds of possibilities for international experiences. So I'm kind of thinking the other side of the moon is, that the moon that is STEAM is internationalism. And I actually think the tunnel through the moon might be the arts because it belongs on both sides. So we'll be watching that, kind of watching how this tri-states visit goes and how the department responds and watching how these questions affect, I mean, Duane's department's already been dealing with this. Social Studies has been dealing with the new social studies standards, but also where they are on this. And this might be, this might be something we want to talk more about.
I really like that description of that vision, Bill. But you talked about, you know, our, our objective of, of, you know, growing the leaders in no matter what field you're in. I, I think that you don't have to have the objective of creating, you know, leaders in organizations. I don't think you can be a responsible global citizen, or a responsible citizen, period, without that global, international vocabulary and understanding that goes to exactly what you're talking about. And I, I think if we could create graduates that could go on and effectively participate in that way, we're doing right by everybody.
We might have some leaders who can take us there.
Great.
Just a, just a very quick question, since we're talking about English and curriculum as it relates to the Common Core. I mean, one of the things that has been debated now, I guess, the last few years is the mix between fiction, nonfiction, is it right, is it not right? I guess, what is your view, the district's view on that balance and has it gone too far one way or the other or it's fine? It's an interesting time to think about it, given that it seems like Albany is at least talking about making some tweaks here and there to, you know, the Common Core. And this is one area where at least it's gotten a lot of debate.
If we follow the standardized test, it would be maybe one-fifth of what we read would be fiction. You know, you look at some of the standardized tests and they're really, you know, they're looking at passages now that are scientific in nature, historical in nature, documents from American history, those types of documents. You know, fortunately, we're not alone, so I know that some of that work is already being shouldered in the social studies department. And some of the work of reading those historical documents comes from so many DBQs that students have worked on over the years. So we still have not thrown the baby out with the bathwater here. We're doing a lot of fiction, but we've interspersed over the years a lot more nonfiction that is thematically related. We've tried to use nonfiction as a way to help us gain a lens through which to see the fiction. So to give you a really good example, and this has been something we've been doing for years, Freudian psychology has been a lens that students study in ninth grade as a way to view Lord of the Flies. So you take a text that's a seminal work and one that's been on part of the canon for a long time, but now you look at it a little bit differently. And you use some of those texts as a way to understand differently, which I think is, you know, really what we're trying to do anyway, is give students that ability to have a multi-textual experience. The more we do with that, the better. The less we do in terms of direct test prep, I think, is also a good thing for us. And most importantly, we just need students to be energized by the written word.
Right. Makes sense. What are they excited about? They really not falling asleep at the table?
Absolutely. Exactly, exactly.
So on that, I think unless there's other questions, we can wrap it up. It's been a long interview for this group. Let me thank you. Thanks for coming out and it's just really stimulating to have these conversations. They've been really exciting. So I think the questions did what they intended to do. They sort of got the board thinking and talking as well as us and hopefully our community as we engage them. And I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing this. This is great. I really appreciate all of you taking this time out and having this conversation with us. I look forward to being brought up to date and how it's going.
Yeah, and I'm sorry you had to, you know, wait for us to finish them. You know, it really is awful to get such a terrific group like this together and just sort of waste your time like that. I apologize for that, but I hope it was a good conversation for you. I certainly appreciate it and I look forward to a continued dialogue.
Andrew, you're sticking around for a little bit longer, right?
Yeah, they're going to leave. Thank you. Thanks so much, everyone.